Seven o'clock, let's take this, put this meeting to order, start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clear Cody roll call please.
Supervisor Gunning.
Here.
Treasurer Rice.
Here.
Trustee Houck.
Here.
Trustee Micus.
Here.
Trustee Lannan.
Here.
Trustee Worley.
Here.
Clear Cody here.
All right, brings us to item four, approval of agenda. Any motions to approve or amend the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Discussion? Your motion is support, discussion? Seeing none, we put this to vote, all in favor approving the agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. We move on to item five, presentations, this is going to be wellhead protection plan presented by Megan Flag. Flag?
Flag.
Flag? From Peerless Midwest.
Okay, hello everybody.
Hello.
I've been working with Union Township here for five or more years on their wellhead protection. Right now, we're working on the update, so that, the update means that we've already done portions of this before, and 2013, they got approved by the state of Michigan for their wellhead protection. If you, you can go ahead and change the slide. So, part of the wellhead, or the main part of the wellhead protection is determining where your groundwater is coming from. So, you have three wellfields for Union Township, they're shown on the map here. Two of them are along Business 127, and the other one is on the west side of the township. You can go ahead and change it, so. There's seven elements to a wellhead protection program. The roles and responsibilities, those are people that are responsible for making sure that once this wellhead protection plan is written up, that it's implemented. So, that's making sure that the protection area is well maintained, and you know potential contaminant sources and things like that. So, those roles and responsibilities fall to Kim, I made her the planned administrator for the wellhead protection program. And then, there's a local planning team, which, right now, for a grant through the state of Michigan, the grant is helping pay for half of this project. So, that entails meeting quarterly for a local planning team, and the local planning team's made up of people in the community, first responders, the health department, me as a consultant for the hydrogeology and whatnot. Then, the next step is the wellhead protection delineation. So, you take the information based on pumping tests that have occurred at the different wellfields, and you model the delineation area, which I will show in the next slide, hold on one moment. No, that's fine, we can, you can leave it up there. So, the delineation area is defined as a one-year, five-year, and 10-year time of travel. So, the red here is around your wellfields are the one-year time of travel. So, any water that falls on the ground, or is on the surface there and infiltrates down into the aquifer, it'll take one year from that red circle to get to your wells. So, the reason why this is important is because we want to know the activities that are occurring in these wellhead protection areas, what kind of businesses are there and whatnot, so we can have an idea if there is some kind of contamination. There is a standardized monitoring that occurs quarterly and probably monthly for the water quality. So, if you ever have a detection of anything, you can look back and say, okay, what's occurring in our protection area that might be contaminating our wells? So, that's the, one big portion of wellhead protection is defining where your well, water is coming from. Can you go back one more slide, get back? So, once we have the delineation area defined, we need to identify potential sources of contamination. We need to protect and manage that area, and protect the sanitary setback for your wells. So, that means making sure that there's fencing around them, they're getting checked daily by somebody, an employee from the township, to the water department. So, trying to reduce any risks to the wells and the wellfield. The contingency plan is the other portion, and that is updated annually by Kim, in January, I think that she does it. And that is to have information about how, where to shut off the wells if there is some kind of contamination, how you can isolate the wellfields so that you could still have, get water to the community. It's also what to do, who to call in case of an emergency, if there's a spill or something like that. One of your major, what I think is a major potential contaminant source is Business 127, so any of the, if there's any fuel trucks coming through there with those, the wellfields, two wellfields really close to that, you know, if there is a spill that could potentially get down into the aquifer and have some contamination of your wells. The next part is new wells, or to have a future planning to deal with growth of the community, to make sure you have enough water to supply the demands. Another portion of that is that way you can isolate wellfields. Now, you guys have a good system where you have three different wellfields, so you can isolate if one gets contaminated, or if you're having issues at one, you can get some water from the other wellfields. So, right now, that isn't a huge step for you guys, to have like another wellfield put in somewhere else, because you have that separation already. And then, the last portion is the public education and outreach, so that's part of this, this step right here, is me coming and talking to you and explaining the wellhead protection. But that's also trying to, we created brochures to hand out and give to the health department to have here on site, so if anybody comes in, you can inform them of the wellhead protection if they have questions about it. We have, you have to have the wellhead protection plan publicly available, so if anybody wants to come in and look at it, they can look at it, and, and whatnot. So, you can go to the next slide, so, you go to. Okay, so, this figure here, like I said, we have to identify the potential contaminant sources. So, there were 17 federal sites that were identified, and those are retail facilities, there's some oil lube facilities, nursery, an old grocery store, so there, you guys don't have too many big concerns. Like I said, Highway 127, and then, private wells and septic systems in your, the rural portions of the community. So, those are your main, main items that might be influencing your groundwater quality. And then, the next slide? I think that's it. So, the whole point of this is to kind of be proactive and protect your water source, and to educate the public as best as you can. I have this figure here, that's going to go up at the Isabella Water Treatment Plant. And that way, when you have any, anybody come and visit, or you have tours of the facility, you can point out the wellhead protection area and talk about it. Sean is on the wellhead protection planning team, so he's really good about that, so. Is there any questions or anything? Okay, well, making that case?
I do have one question. When it comes to that one-year flow.
Time of travel, yeah.
Time of travel. What's, what would be the amount of water on the surface that could penetrate our wells in one year? Is it a gallon, is it a thousand gallons?
It all depends. Your, the Mission Road wellfield and the Isabella Road wellfield, those wells aren't very deep. They're less than 100 feet or around 100 feet in total depth, and there's a lot of sand. So, the potential for some kind of water or contaminant at the surface getting down to your, to the screened aquifer is, I think is fairly high. That's why I say Business 127 is one of your main things, because if there was to be a spill, to get it cleaned up so it didn't penetrate the ground too far. But, that red line, if any, if you had a drop of water, and it dropped on that red line, and it actually infiltrated straight down to your aquifer, it would take one year for it to get to your, to be pumped out of your well. And we modeled that area, like I said, we ran pumping tests, we looked at the groundwater surface, and modeled it with a modeling program to determine that area of flow.
When did you do that modeling?
We did that in 2012, we did, we went around, me and Kim and Sean drove around and collected water levels, and then, we had, anytime we put in a well, or a well goes in, the state requires either a 24- or 72-hour pumping test, so you just pump constantly at a certain rate, and you use that information based on the drawdown of the water to input into a model to determine your protection area.
And back some time after 2012, after you did this modeling, you created a multi-page book?
Yes.
Description of the, a detailed description of that, so, there's that information from 2012. The stuff you're presenting to us today is that information, it's not new information?
The delineation was not redone, because your pumping rates and what was modeled as what you were pumping, it hasn't increased at this time, so we kept the delineation area the same. So, we're just, right now, we're updating the potential contaminant sources and seeing if there's anything changed in that. The contingency plans changed, contact numbers and things like that have changed. And then, part of the plan is, the management portion is going through and, you know, we, back in 20, 2012, 2013, we said, okay, we're going to do this, this, and this, and right now, we're updating that, saying, yes, we did it, or it's ongoing, or whatnot, so kind of going through and just updating that plan. So, the state has it and you have it, because if anything, you know, if there's a tornado or something like that that knocks out power, how do you get water to the community? So, that's part of this plan, is trying to deal with all that, so.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
And thank you all for signing in. Part of the grant is having protection meetings, and we have to show that somebody attended them.
All right, that brings us on to item seven, which is public comment. This is going to be restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Please state your name.
Good evening, Jeff Sweet, 2112 Cobblestone Court. On behalf of myself and Fisher Companies, tonight to discuss a little bit about item 10B, about the Lincoln Road improvement timeline. First of all, Phil, thank you, I heard you're leaving the board, but thank you for your service. You've done an admirable job, and the citizens appreciate it, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Quick, kind of got thrown into this at a last-minute deal, but I'm enough, I know enough to be a little bit dangerous, but the timeline of the Lincoln Road reconstruction being split into two separate years for what I'm talking about, south of 20, between 20 and Broomfield, I just feel is a really bad idea. From a business standpoint, and we saw this in 2017 when the bridge was redone, but tying up Lincoln Road for two straight years will have a direct financial impact on our businesses. To service our customers to the south, this will push all of our trucks east on High, south on Mission for two straight years. There's already congestion in those areas, and we saw in 2017 with many backups in the morning and the evening on High Street. So, to draw that out over two years, I feel would be a mistake. And a lot of that frustration will come to us, because our trucks are on that street. So, a lot of that, when you see a big red truck, it's Fisher Transportation, no matter if it's Malle or Pat's or anybody else, they're going to call us, so, we feel a lot of that frustration will come out to our end. Trip times for us is, as far as a business would increase. So, all of our work south, if you're either South County, Shepherd, that area, or Grasha County, or anywhere else, would increase our custom, cost to our customers, and that includes government entities, right? So, if Isabella County Road Commission wants to redo a road, part of Blanchard Road, and we've got to, we've got to increase that cost, and that's going to reflect on taxpayers. But it also makes us less competitive in the market, right? So, for two years, we would be at a disadvantage in the marketplace for bidding work. And not just Fisher Companies, Central Concrete, Central Asphalt, Fisher Transportation, but other surrounding businesses that are much smaller and much, would take a hit over two years, much greater would be the gas station at 20 and Lincoln. So, no one's going to be coming from the south for two years to get gas at 20 and Lincoln. Mitchell's Deli, no one's going to be coming from the south, there's a large population, campus population, that way, that would come up through there. And over a two-year period, drivers are going to develop new habits, right? So, even after the project's done, if it takes two years, you're going to change habits. And so, they might not be able to recover from that, that business impact. Other businesses in that area, Northwoods Vet Clinic, and the mini-storeage on Independence Drive, they would be cut off for two years, so, that's basically saying, no new customers. Your existing customers would probably come, but you wouldn't grow your business. Central Michigan Christian Church, right on Lincoln, no new members, no new churchgoers. They're not going to go through construction for two years to find a new church. So, I think it would cripple some of these small businesses and the church. So, from a personal, from a taxpayer standpoint, drawing out the project over two years is a large increase of the price of the project, okay? So, on every road project, the top pay item is mobilization cost, right? So, it's usually 10% of the cost of the overall project, so if the project's a million-dollar project, your mobilization's going to be $100,000 at least. So, now you have two projects, you have two mobilizations, so if, and I don't know the numbers of what the project's going to cost, but if the one side costs a million, the other side costs a million, that's $200,000. Where before, it would be cheaper over on, overall project, because they're not going to be $2 million apiece if you do them together, right? Because you're going to get a decrease in mobilization, not just mobilization, but the labor for that year, you know, material prices and everything else. So, I would take a look at that. You're going to lose your volume discounts, right? So, when we go out to bid jobs, we look at jobs that are larger, much tighter, right? We know we're going to have higher competition, we know we're going to, people are going to be going after these jobs. So, you bid it very tight, and you want that work that is going to span over the entire season. So, you bid it more competitively, you bid it more aggressively. So, if you split it up into two small jobs, you're going to lose that volume discount. Material and labor are always going to go up.
Mr. Sweet?
Yep.
We're pushing the three minutes.
Okay. Material and labor up to increase in the second year, just not a use of, great use of tax dollars. General pain in the butt to get around, right? We knew that in 2017 when the bridge is closed, to get to campus, from our neighborhood right here, to get to campus, and this is the main outer core thoroughfare, just a big pain in the butt to have it for two years. Wait, wait till 2021, you'll still save money, have your money in place, get it done in one year. Just don't spread it over two, so, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is going to seem like small potatoes or whatever compared to that. I'm here concerning the possibility of having the McGurk subdivision repaved. I'm Pat Mayfield, I live in the McGurk subdivision, and I live at 1796 Mamie Street, and I've lived there for 28 years. This would be our second paving project. Back in 1995, we resurfaced McGurk Street going in, and then, the other side streets, James Court, Mamie Street, and Rosemarie Lane, were all dirt, which we paved at that time. There are 29 families that live in the subdivision, as well as the property that lies on the northwest corner of McGurk Street. This is a part of the original Rainy City wellsite. The city utility truck uses McGurk Street numerous times during the day to access their facility. We, as a subdivision, feel that the city should be responsible for some of the surfacing costs along with the residents. Like I say, they're using McGurk Street specifically to get in and out of their facility, and then, the fact that they have right-of-way to tear up our newly paved road to gain access to whatever utilities lay under it. So, we just feel as residents, that's something that should be looked at, whether it's feasible to draw them in or not, but we would like to have that addressed, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else for our three-minute period? Seeing none, we close, close public comment, and we move to item eight, reports and board comments. Appointments as needed, we get that pesky little, what is it, sidewalk sustainability one too, right?
Well, the sidewalk committee, I'm glad you brought that up. And, as you can see on the list, two representatives on the sidewalk and pathways prioritization committee, their memberships expire this month, and both Sherri Teal and Connie Bills expressed in email amongst the committee members that they would be willing and interested in renewing their term on the sidewalk committee. So, being that they're doing some very valuable work for the township, and have, they have a meeting scheduled once per month, that I would recommend we renew both Sherri Teal's term for two years on the, as the township resident representative, and Connie Bill's term as a member-at-large for two years.
I'll support that.
I'd support. Discussion on this? Do they have applications in?
Sherri did send an application in that, and did you forward it to the administration office? Your application?
Not yet.
Not yet, and Connie will be sending one, so yeah, they'll be coming in, but, you know, we do know them, they've been serving diligently on the committee for two years, and they're, all the members provide valuable input, and, you know, certainly Sherri and Connie would be very good to have renewed at this time.
Test that new road out again.
I guess the only question I would have is from a protocol standpoint, and all our board appointments, we do require an application to be in, so, I don't know if we should act on this at this point or not. If you want, it's up to you folks what you want to do.
Well, they're both current members, right? And we know they're going to be doing it, I know just informality-wise, but, you know, can we waive that for, I mean, it has a board for that, you know?
That'd be fine. I mean, it's up to you, consensus, on what we want to do, so.
But you're right.
Down the doors to do now. That's a good point, Bill, you know, we haven't had a lot of expression over time of anyone outside of this court that's on the committee now expressing interest.
Well, let's, we do have a nomination then, and seconds for both Sherri Teal and two-year extension. This would be what, through 8/15 of 2021? Let's act on Sherri first, and so, all in favor of appointing, or affirming the nomination of Sherri Teal for a two-year term on the sidewalks and pathways prioritization committee? This would be expiring 8/15 of 2021, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome Sherri back, and then Connie Bills, and this would also be an expiration date of 8/15 of 2021. And this would be again, to affirm the nomination with vote for the sidewalks and pathways prioritization committee for two-year term, to Connie Bills, expiring 8/15 of 2021, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Connie Bills, welcome back, two-year term.
We also need to have a board representative to replace Phil on that, and I would like to nominate Kimberly Rice for that position. I know she's expressed interest in it.
I'd support that nomination.
All right, you good with that?
I'm good with that.
All right. So, do we need to have Phil officially resign from that position first, before we fill it?
Well, good point, horse in front of the cart here will do that, and, yeah, as you all know, I submitted my resignation from the township board due to the fact that I'll be moving out of the township this Friday, so my nominee, my resignation letter would be effective at that time. And, so, that's the announcement. Your action next then would be to accept, well, I don't know if you have to accept it, because since I'll be moving out of the township, I'm qualified to be a township trustee.
So, would we have to wait with Kim, or should we make this effective as of the termination date?
That would make sense.
With your resignation?
So, 8/30, right?
It would have to be 8/31, actually, because you'd be official until 8:30 midnight. Is that right, or, no?
It's the 29th midnight.
Oh, 29th midnight, okay, gotcha, okay.
12:01, then Cinderella.
Why can't we just make it effective now?
I'd make a motion to accept Trustee Micus's resignation.
I, I'd make a motion to accept trustee Micus' resignation effective commencing with the, the date of August thirtieth, the beginning of August thirtieth.
Support.
Support, yeah.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's jump right on that.
I would like to say a few things to Phil, um, in regarding to his service on the board. I think just, uh, accepting his resignation and saying nothing would be anticlimactic. Um, Phil has, um, been on three different boards consecutively for 11 years and that's quite a chunk of time for any individual to put in, let alone getting elected three times for that particular position. Um, I just want to share a few observations. Um, I wrote some notes down and just thinking about your leaving tonight that have impressed me about you, Phil. Um, you know, you always come in here, you're very well organized and you're always prepared. You're extremely knowledgeable of all the materials and you're also very knowledgeable when we get stuck on some of the procedures, you know, Robert's laws or Robert's rules or whatever. You're good on all this stuff and, and the policy governance. What I have found in your deliberations is that you've always been fair-minded. I think your deliberations are done without bias or prejudice. Um, they're, um, never have I seen it being partisan at all. Um, what I've really appreciated is that it's very been fact-based and, um, and evidence-based in your decisions. You know, you always look at the facts and how it, and how they support or how do you then, um, you know, deny the, the thing. What I'm also impressed with, with Phil is that is, I think he's exhibited extreme, extreme honesty and integrity and I think he is a standard for this board for, for, for us to follow. Three other things. I, I have appreciated the fact that you have upheld and you have, um, adhered to our policy governance, um, throughout its existence and continue to do so today. Um, that you support and you respect our manager and our township staff. You've always shown that. And I've also seen you as, um, having been a visionary. You really look for what's in the best interest of the township and the residents. And I think that's always been a thing that guides you, just do the best you can and make the best decision that you can. And, and I've tried to guide myself by that same principle as well. Um, and it, it's exactly these traits and values that had your constituents voting for you, not one time, not twice, but three times, which I think is pretty remarkable to have that type of, of a tenure. So I just want to say in closing that it's been a privilege for me to refer to you as my colleague and even more so for you to be my friend. So thank you for your service.
Well, Norm, thank you very much for those words and, uh, I, I really appreciate those words you've shared with us. I think that, um, I certainly miss working with you all and it's been, um, a great ride and.
Little rock once in a while.
Yes, of course, but what isn't, you know? What part of life isn't like that? So it's been very, uh, a very good experience all in all. And I hope that you all are, continue to be successful, um, here on the township board.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Phil. All right. We need to vote for, uh, we need to take care of, uh, Mrs. Rice's here's nomination too. Now forget, forget that.
Don't let her off the hook.
Yeah, well, for, well, for Phil's corpse gets cold here. So this would be to affirm the nomination of Kim Rice to take over Phil Micus' position on sidewalk and pathways prioritization committee. This is, um, expiration date of seven twenty-six, 2021. So all in favor?
Effective.
Effective as of, uh, twelve oh one AM on August thirtieth. You're responsible. So just to let you know. All right?
What was the expiration date?
It'd be the thirty first.
Expiration date would be seven twenty-six of 2021. Obviously we have an election in there too.
Right, we should probably correct it to the date and election.
Which was what, eleven?
November twenty seven.
Eleven twenty twenty twenty.
Eleven twenty twenty twenty?
That was fun to say.
Yeah. There you go. Okay, so this would be an expiration date changed from the, um, published expiration date and it would be eleven twenty of 2020. So all in favor of Kim's nomination, affirming that vote, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're the sidewalk representative, congratulations. All right. Planning commission and ZVA updates by the township planner, Mr. Gallinette.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, we had one item, it was a dimensional variance located at fifty-one fifteen Stirrup Lane. If you recall, this is the property that was rezoned from, um, R five to R two B and a special use permit was approved for a group daycare home on the condition that a dimensional variance, uh, be obtained. That dimensional variance was obtained, uh, earlier this month, granted from the zoning board of appeals. Planning commission, uh, we had a few site plans that we looked at. Uh, one was for Renaissance Academy. Uh, they have proposed a nine thousand five hundred and twenty square foot addition. Uh, this project was approved. Uh, they will be placing sidewalks, uh, along Isabella Road as part of the sidewalk policy. Uh, Midstate Electric, uh, on the corner of Venture Way in Somerton, uh, they had a site plan, they're zoned I one, and so they applied for provisional relief from the construction of sidewalks and they were granted that. Uh, their project did not propose any new buildings or additions. It was simply repaving what was existing pavement and then adding more pavement to what, uh, was gravel. Uh, they also, uh, are putting in a stormwater, uh, management system. Uh, we had four hacks, uh, river road, uh, residential, uh, development. Uh, this plan was a preliminary plan, uh, they did not give final approval on it. Later on, we'll be going through a plat process that will be coming to this board and both the planning commission. Uh, but the proposed plan calls for, uh, four two-family dwellings or four condos, if you will. Uh, we held a public hearing for a special use permit, uh, self-storage expansion on Park Place. Uh, it's a vacant parcel just s- south of Graphic Central on Park Place. Uh, further to the south, there's an existing self-storage business. Uh, they would like to expand that business onto this parcel. Uh, this parcel is zoned B four and it calls for a special use permit. Their existing parcel is zoned I one and so is used by right. Uh, if permitted, the, the two parcels, um, will be joined as one. Uh, this permit application will be making its way to this board, uh, September eleventh. Uh, the planning commission made a favorable recommendation on the special use permit. Uh, we also had a short presentation. Uh, the name of the project right now is the Den on Broome Field. It calls for a multi-use, uh, prod, multi-use, uh, development on the corner of Broome Field and Sweeney Road. Uh, it would be retail on the first floor and it's calling for two additional floors, a second and a third floor would be residential. Uh, the project does not at this time, uh, meet, uh, our current zoning standards and so the developer is looking for, uh, either variances, uh, for the project or they're also leaning at this point more towards proposing a text amendment, um, to see if the project would be feasible. So we'll, they gave a presentation just to give the planning commission a introduction to the project. Uh, they'll be back before the planning commission with a possible proposal for a text amendment and if so, it'll make its way to the, uh, this body for adoption. So that's what we've been up to this, uh, this month at the zoning board of appeals and planning commission.
Good report, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, our monthly activity reports. We've all probably gone through and read, um, board member reports. Let's start with, um, Tim.
Sure. Uh, thank you. Uh, Lord, I attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners regular board meeting August twentieth and they, uh, appointed a number of folks to various boards and commissions and I wanted to fill everyone in on those appointments. Brett Fisher was appointed to the Board of Public Works. Maureen Eek was appointed as the Central Michigan University Representative to the Human Rights Committee. Two at-large, uh, representatives also were appointed to the Human Rights Committee and that was Erica Popcraft and Elizabeth Husband. And an at-large representative was appointed to the Parks and Recreation Committee and that was Jeremy Murphy. And, uh, in other business, uh, there was, upon approval of the county's legal council, a approval was made to spell out, uh, language for the decommissioning of wind turbines in the area that, uh, as the county has a fair number of wind turbines up there at the point where they need to think ahead fifteen years down the road or so where decommissioning will take place. So they're working on that sort of language and their attorney is reviewing that. I also attended the Council of Governments' August twenty-first meeting and, uh, the Isabella County Administrator Margaret McAvoy, uh, got up and shared her thoughts on the importance and need and statutory responsibilities for getting a new jail built for the county. And she, uh, went through some of the, uh, her reasons that it is so important and so needed and was seeking public support. Uh, also, the main presentation was given by the Isabella County Equalization, uh, manager, Pete Preston, and he focused on the area of industrial utility, industrial and utility personal property taxes and the importance of, and, uh, and the, uh, exercise and methods that an assessor would go through and value and, uh, that, that personal property. Uh, there was a push by the electric utility, uh, industry to getting an exemption on the electrical infrastructure, which did not pass and they spoke about how critically that would impact, uh, townships that have transmission lines running through their area. And it was a, um, a, a good and insightful, uh, presentation and certainly appreciated attending that.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
I don't have any, uh, report to share today.
All right. Thank you, Phil. Phil?
What's the road commission meeting last Thursday, twenty-second? We talked about our obvious project built here in front, repaving Lincoln Road. Our gravel roads have been brined for the third time and they're going through the county mowing for a second time, mowing all the ditches. One thing, like the Council of Governments meeting on zero two, um, I was just looking the date up. They were wondering how many people would be interested in going to their Christmas dinner. It's going to be at Denver Township, at the Denver Township Hall and it'd still be the eighteenth then, the third?
That happens to be a board meeting.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Do they deliver?
That's a pretty good move. Anyways, that's it.
Thank you, Bill.
Um, taxes, they are due September fourteenth. Um, they can be paid online, um, and that, so if you go to our website, union township mi.com, um, you can just click on the bill pay and put your information and, um, you can pay it online as well now, so, yeah, September fourteenth.
All right. Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Norm?
I have none for tonight.
At the last city meeting, they are, okay, hold on. Introducing an ordinance on September ninth for the recreational marijuana establishments. And they're having their public hearing and they're looking for public input on that. They're, they're wanting people to come and give their input on it, so they're looking forward to that and they, even in their end comments, they commented about it too, to come in and give your input. And then, and how, okay, what else did you go? They passed a resolution supporting the, supporting a three hundred seventy-five dollar fee for the recommendation for the neighborhood enterprise zone in the commercial redevelopment district for the applications. They had a really short meeting.
You liked that part?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, EDA last week, uh, we'll be actually discussing, uh, one of the things that we discussed during the meeting and that is, um, the, uh, Lincoln Road, possibility of trying to, um, make that a one-year project as opposed to a multiple-year project. So we'll discuss that here as we move into new business. Um, all right.
I said I had no report tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
You weren't paying attention, Kim.
I was, but I'm definitely not enough.
Still talking about taxes. Consent agenda. We have any items on the consent agenda that we would like to discuss?
I'll make a motion to accept this. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion.
I looked everything over, things look good. I do have one question. Um, is there not a township vehicle that can be driven from the water treatment plant to the township hall? I just noticed that we're, all the mileage we're paying out, I mean, it would seem to me like if there's a township vehicle there that that should be driven back and forth. Cause I know, last, two weeks ago, we approved mileage for two people and then this, this month or this meeting, we're approving it for another person again. I'm just wondering, I know sometimes they have to drive their own vehicles or they want to drive their own vehicles, but I don't see why the township or the citizen should be paying someone mileage if they're driving to the township hall to pick up the mail and then they're going out to lunch and then driving back to the water treatment plant.
Talking about the hundred and forty-two dollar item there? On page twenty-five?
Yes. I just wondered if there is a, maybe I'm nitpicking, but it seems to me we've got three township vehicles that sit out here pretty much all day. I don't know how many vehicles we have at the water treatment plant, but it just seems like they could drive one of those back and forth. So I'm just throwing that out there.
How much do we, do we reimburse for a mile of?
Fifty-eight cents.
It changes per state.
Fifty-eight cents a mile with the rate is right now.
I don't understand.
Right.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, that's a good point, Bill. Something to think about here, a hundred and forty-two dollars is a lot of gas.
Well, it's also wear and tear on your vehicle, there's mileages, but I just, you know, we've got plenty of township vehicles, I'm just wondering why they aren't using a township vehicle.
And you look.
Can you look at the detail that supports that reimbursement, and the detail indicated it was all for one trip?
Yeah. Not just one trip.
Well, I mean...
Obviously, with that amount of miles, it would have been 20 trips. So that would be, you know, four days, or five days a week for four weeks. It would be, it was 12 miles back and forth, which I understand, but to me, it just seems like we've got all these vehicles. Why are we paying mileage, why are we paying people mileage to drive their own vehicles when we have township vehicles? And then, I've looked at dates, and if one person's coming over here, why can't they pick the mail up when they're here instead of that same, the other person coming over every day? If someone's already here, they can't pick the mail up and take the bag with them? I mean, I, I hope I'm not, I don't care if I am nitpicking. I mean, it's ridiculous.
So we have multiple people with mileage reimbursements, or is it just the one? I don't see any, any other besides this one, right?
Well, this one on this month.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
And it's all back and forth from here to the water treatment plant.
Those are valid observations. We can examine it. The city, the township does have a policy that, for business to reimburse mileage. Of course, we also do have fleet vehicles. So, you know, we can look at that. I don't know that you've ever seen me request reimbursement. So that's the other side of the coin. I just don't, but I could. But it's a valid point.
All right. Any other discussion points, consent agenda? All right. So, at this point in time, we have a motion and a second, correct? All right. So this would be in favor of approving the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda approved, and we move into new business. First item would be item A. This is a discussion action item. Consider the adoption of zoning map amendment ordinance 2019 dash 05, and publish a notice of adoption for ordinance 2019 dash 05.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This, the applicant's Rosewood Development LLC, you've seen this item before you, at least once before. They've applied for rezoning. It's intended use as a medical facility. They'd originally requested a rezoning in April of this year. That was withdrawn. They've received additional input from the neighborhoods. They submitted a revised request. The planning commission reviewed that and voted to recommend this body the approval. And then, at your last meeting on August 14th, you met instructed staff to publish this notice in the newspaper, which we did, the revised zoning map in the local paper, and that allows you, or positions you now to take final consideration on the rezoning.
I'd make a motion to adopt, for adoption of the zoning map amendment ordinance 2019 dash 05.
Support.
Okay, motion support, discussion.
I like the fact that at first they came in to want to rezone that entire parcel. And if you notice, what they're basically doing now, it's just, it's a little shy of four acres, which would be a medical facility and a parking lot, but they've also now reserved the additional property that they were going to rezone, and the future outlook is for either a senior citizen housing or a assisted living. And I think, again, when you look at the demographics, and you look at community need, I think that that fits very nicely. Thing I also like is that at some point, you'd have a medical facility right next door to, you know, this facility. So I think it meets a lot of nice criteria this way. And lastly, you know, the PC approved it. We did approve it the last time, and, and as I say, it coincides with their master plan, so I think there's no reason why, why we would not approve it again.
Yeah. I like the fact that they had communication with the residents in that area.
Yeah, and they were willing to change.
Yep. That's, that's, you know, I think kudos. Any further discussion?
I agree with all those points. Couple of citizens brought forth the concern of increased traffic, but things were hashed out, consensus came too, so it seems very, like a great project for the community.
Yep. I like all these projects to work like that. All right. Further discussion? All right. So, this will be a roll call vote. This would be to approve, let me go back again, the, this is to publish the notice, the, the adoption of zoning map ordinance amendment 2019 dash 05, and then publish the notice of adoption for ordinance 2019 dash 05 in the newspaper. Clerk Cody?
Supervisor Gunning?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Help?
Yes.
Trustee Micus?
Yes.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
All right. Move on to our next item in new business, and this is the item from the EDA that was referred to earlier. To receive and discuss the letter from the EDA regarding the Lincoln Road improvement timeline.
So there's a letter in your packet from the EDA, signed by the chair. The Economic Development Authority is asking for the Board of Trustees' support in encouraging the Isabella County Road Commission to complete the Lincoln Road project from M-20 to Broomfield in a single construction season. The current plan is to complete that in two stages. The first stage, from the bridge south to Broomfield, is anticipated to be done right now in 2020. The second stage, north from the bridge, is anticipated to be completed in a subsequent year, though I don't know if there's any firm, firm year yet for that northern section. Nonetheless, the EDA wholeheartedly supports the project, the entire project, and that's evidenced by the financial contribution they've made to the project of $300,000. The Board of Trustees has also committed $160,000 to that project. The EDA's commitment is to the southern end of the project, as is the board's. But the EDA feels that by proceeding in two stages, the disruption to commerce and transportation, the emergency vehicle routing, the general citizenry, transportation flow, by doing that in two seasons, everybody will experience that two times. And so if there is a way to, to do this in one season, all those disruptions would be minimized. If the board is inclined to want to voice their support to the Road Commission, there's a resolution in your packet that we drafted to, to evidence that support, and you could take action on that if, if you're so inclined to, to follow the EDA's request.
I'd make a motion that we approve the request by the Union Township EDA to support the completion of the improvements plan for Lincoln Road between M-20 and Broomfield in a single construction season, and communicate the said support to the Isabella County Road Commission.
I'll support that.
Yeah, in a discussion point, I would bring it out to the board for clarity that, since my business is actually in the West EDA, and I would be affected financially, it's up to the board whether or not you feel I should be, recuse myself from the vote on this, on the resolution, or if you feel I should go forward with it.
I think you should recuse yourself because it's financial gain or loss.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Probably. Just for appearance alone.
You know.
Yep, that's what I thought. So I'll be recusing out of the vote on this resolution then.
I'm going to do it anyway.
The motion, what I was asking about, the motion was in support of communicating that. I wonder if the motion shouldn't be to approve the resolution.
Okay, so I can adjust that, that we make a motion to approve the resolution that the Union Township Board of Trustees and the Union Township EDA support the project, and that we'd like to have it completed in one constru-, yeah.
I'll still support it.
I got wordy there.
Do you want me to read it again, or it's like highlighted on the top of the page? A resolution in support of the completing of Lincoln Road improvements between M-20 and Broomfield in one single construction season.
Perfect. So that, that becomes a motion. Yeah, gotcha.
And then, roll call is Supervisor Gunning is refused? Treasurer Rice?
As far as discussion.
Oh, discussion.
I guess what pops in my mind first off is, you know, I certainly would like to see the project done in one season if at all possible. But the County Road Commission has their schedule, planning in place. So it could potentially delay the whole project till, really, who knows when, if they can't get it started in 2020 and do the whole project. So it could create a delay. That's about the major thing I see as a problem.
Was it, did the Road Commission come to the EDA and describe why the project has to be spread over two years?
I think that's just simply the way that they had, had scheduled it out. I think it was more based upon funding than anything else. But, you know, this is something that's been delayed. It was supposed to happen last year, and then it was supposed to happen this year, and now it's not happening until next year. And I think they've had some issues with easements. There's some issues with residents that would lose their ability to be able to leave their houses for the most part. So they had to kind of get through those obstacles, and...
Did they get through the obstacles by having a two-year scheduling?
That's, that's on them. My only thing I know is, is that it was always presented just strictly as the south to Broomfield. You know, it was never discussed about M-20 to the bridge. The only thing I know on it is, is that they had performed some of the groundwork as far as engineering previously. The storm sewer was put in, so that's different than the, the south side. The south side was, was, you know, asked to have storm sewer put in, whereas the north side's already had that part of the project done. So beyond that, you know, talking with, with, you know, Vance Johnson and Jim Zalid were more knowledgeable on it than I am. You know, they felt, both of them felt that, that, you know, and our discussion is that it was, you know, doable, and there was a cost savings.
The primary driver on the current schedule is funding. A lot of the funding is from state and federal, and there's different types of funding, and when those are available, that type of thing. They have secured funding for the, for the piece south of the river, and this resolution is just simply encouraging
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
The Road Commission to try to see if they can do it in a single construction season. I'm pretty confident that the Road Commission would not risk half of the project, you know, would risk losing the funding by delaying it beyond what is allowable. But this is an encouragement, and, you know, kind of asking the Road Commission to see what they can do in terms of the funding with the state and the feds and whoever, to see if they can't package it and still get it, still get the funding partners their current commitments.
We're simply making a recommendation here. They ultimately be the ones who decide, so, you know, and, and they should be the ones that decide because they're the ones that do the work, so.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. You know, by my question, I wasn't expressing, I didn't intend to communicate any opposition to the resolution. I think it makes sense that we ask them to see if they can do it in one year. And I understand the process. We can't just call them up and say, hey, neighbor, can you do this for us?
Yeah.
So we'll communicate it this way.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, yeah.
What's inconvenienced to them, too, when it's shut down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right in the vote?
Yeah.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Help?
Yes.
Trustee Micus?
Yes.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
All right. Item C. This is the consideration approval to prepare cost estimates and develop the formal petition of the establishment of a paving special district from McGurk subdivision.
So there's quite a bit of information in your packet on this item, beginning on page 67. Michigan statute authorizes townships to make public improvements and provide services to their residents via special assessments. Special assessment districts can be created at the initiative of the Board of Trustees, or they can be created via a petition of the property owners within the designated area that's, that's, would benefit from the improvements. In that case, in the latter case, the township's role is more administrative in nature. It helps to, we go through a legal process to create the district. We gather cost estimates. We are involved in the planning and, and execution of the project. Often, the township will need to provide the front-end financing, because somebody has to come up with the money at the front end to pay the vendor, and then we're involved in the levying and collection of the special assessments. The residence of the McGurk subdivision is indicated by Ms. Mayfield earlier, and she was the main point of contact, I think, circulating the, what we call the informal petition. She obtained fifty, at least 51% of the property owners expressing interest in establishing this district. The district would include Rosemarie Lane, Mamie Street, McGurk Street, and James Court. The petition that we received, which is, again, informal, has been reviewed by the assessing department and the public services department. We have confirmed that at least 51% of the property owners that would receive benefit have signed the petition, are in favor of establishing this district. In addition, we've reached out to the Road Commission and asked to receive from some very preliminary estimates of cost construction, which are a little, around $65,000. At this point, if authorized by the, by this body, the Board of Trustees, we would end up sending notices to all the affected property owners that an informal petition had been received by, by you all, and that had been reviewed, and, and if you so take action, a formal petition would then be being circulated by one of the residents of the neighborhood. That formal petition then really gets the thing rolling in a, in a, in a formal, a formal sense. If the petition is successful, there's an additional, I want to say 15 steps to actually get a special assessment district approved, formalized, completed, and at the end of the day, you would have a special assessment role, which would outline the amount of money each property owner is responsible for, their share of the project, and then through the process that would eventually be executed by the board, the various steps, there's probably, of these 15- various steps, there's probably, of these 15 steps, there's probably a half a dozen that, at least, that require board, board action. And at the end of the day, you'd have a special assessment role. There'd be a defined term or duration for the payback of the money that the township has fronted. The interest rate by statute would be 1% above prime, whatever that rate would be at the time the board was approving that particular resolution. And then the term would be defined by the board as well, in terms of how many years that amount of money that's due from the property owner can be repaid. So that's where we are now. In order for the process to continue, what the board needs to consider and, and approve is to direct staff to prepare preliminary cost estimates and develop the petition that then can be the formal petition, if you will, to try to evidence at least 51% of the property owners. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm gonna piggyback on something that was brought up earlier, is the, how is with the city having a parcel on there and the utility trucks using, are they involved in, in this process also?
There would be a legal determination, but it, but in most cases, a public entity, even a township, a city, a church, those kind of things that are normally exempt from ad valorem property taxes, are not exempt from special assessments.
Okay, all right.
Are not, or are?
Are not.
Are not.
Are not.
There you go.
But that would get confirmed by legal, but I'm pretty confident with that.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure on that, whether them not being really a taxpayer, how that would function.
Special assessments are by law different than ad valorem taxes. We are exempt from ad valorem taxes. We pay special assessment bills, drain, drain special assessments, those kind of things.
Okay. All right. So, back to this item, the paving special assessment district. We need to have a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to consider approval to prepare preliminary project cost estimates and develop the formal petition for establishment of paving special assessment district from McGurk subdivision.
Support.
Okay, motion support, discussion.
They got, they did everything right. They got the 51% checking out with folks, and, you know, I think at the end of the day, it's, you know, about quality of life, safety, probably improve the value of the homes. So, and, and the people in the neighborhood are requesting it, so I think it fits perfect. The thing when you have a special assessment, you know, no one particularly likes it, but when you look at $65,000, remember that's gonna be spread out among 29 households and perhaps the entity with Mount Pleasant. So it, it really makes it more manageable. And then people can put that under tax rule, and they can pay over a period of time, or pay it in one chunk and avoid the, the interest. So, you know, and obviously, they've done their homework, so I'd say mineral looks good. We did something similar in our neighborhood some years ago, which is really what got me first coming into Union Township. And, and we got our road paved the same way and had that special assessment, so.
Yeah, Phil, your road was done, too, wasn't it, a while back?
Not in the last few years that I've lived there.
Okay. I thought that was, that road was one of those that was done here recently, or in the last four or five years?
I will note that this is step three of the 15-step process. There are, I want to say five resolutions before this is finalized, so you'll be having two public hearings at least. So there'll be plenty of time for you to keep this, five opportunities for you to either keep this project, start it moving, or stop it.
I guess I'd just share, and I've spoken to the board in the past about this, about subdivisions. They have generally quite a number of homes, you know, a lot of tax base coming out of that area. Oftentimes, the subdivision isn't necessarily a through street, but it is utilized by our taxpaying citizens. I would like to actually get to a point sometime where the township has some cost share in the maintenance, maintaining of subdivision-type areas, as we do with gravel roads. We support gravel roads, all roads in our township. So to not participate when you have such a concentration of citizens, I, that just doesn't set right with me. So I've thrown this out to the board in the past to think about it, and so I'll just share that again. I would hope to move in that direction.
Well, you see some of the neighborhoods that, that haven't addressed their roads, and it would really, I would think, affect being able to get a decent price out of your home if you were gonna sell it. You know, your neighborhood, I mean, that's a great example, right?
Yep.
That road needs to be done badly. And so, you know, maybe that's something that in the future we need to discuss, Tim. I agree.
I think that's a good point, Tim. I think the cost sharing would be also maybe a incentive for subdivisions to want to upgrade, knowing that now it's at 65, it might be, you know, 40, that you're splitting among 29 people, you know, because of cost share by us. So, yeah, so I think that's a good idea. Maybe that's something we should put on the agenda at some point and, and talk about it, you know. I think trying to do, do all of it for every neighborhood would be prohibitive cost, in terms of cost, but, you know, in terms of maybe some sort of cost share, that might be a reasonable thing to consider.
My experience in the past, you know, with road improvement, the special assessments, you know, oftentimes you'll get somebody who's driving it and have the means to handle the assessment. And then unfortunately, you might be in a position where you really can, it'd be burdensome, burdensome to you if it goes through. And so, you know, they're all different on the motivation behind it. Hopefully, it's, you get the 51% majority rules in the special assessment world. Township participation is just on my radar.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's something we can, I agree with Norm. We need to discuss that further. All right, so, back to this item. Consider the approval to prepare preliminary project cost estimates and develop a formal petition for the establishment of a paving special assessment district from McGurk subdivision. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we move on to item D on the agenda. This is a Board of Trustees' annual review of board governance policy, number 2.9, collaboration with other entities.
So this is, there's a policy in your governance policy document, 2.9. Policy states that in order to maximize the achievement of your ends, the township manager shall not fail to explore strategic partnerships and intergovernmental cooperation and optimize that collaboration with other entities in the region where appropriate. I've interpreted that policy to indicate that professional relationships will be developed with community partners, and that is appropriate. We'd engage said partners in the exploration of collaborative service delivery opportunities, area-wide communication efforts, and that appropriate focus would be placed on the region and not solely within the political boundaries of the township. There's some data that is on page 86 of your agenda packet that lists a representative sample of those types of collaborative efforts, and that in my opinion, indicators, or evidence that the township manager is in compliance with that policy.
Mark, the list of your justification for reasonable, reasonableness, there we go, is, is significant. Nearly a dozen or more items on the list really highlights the work that we do as a township through your activity to work with entities. It's, I like seeing this list. It reminds me of, of things we've heard, you know, bits and pieces throughout the year at one time or another, and now it's all in front of us. It's, definitely shows that we're in compliance with this policy.
Yeah, I think so, too. And when we started as a board, I think one of our goals was relationship building with the community. And it's been evidenced in terms of how each one of us is assigned as a liaison to a different entity. And I think Mark is, is always out there, and you can see with the list of, of building the relationships. And their relationship, particularly with Isabella County and with Mount Pleasant, has improved significantly as a result of our relationship-building efforts. So I'd say they're in compliance with this for sure.
Want to put the discussion? All right, let's move on to item E. This is the annual review of board governance policy, 4.2, accountability of the township manager.
This is on page 89 of your agenda packet, and this is an opportunity for the board to review its own compliance with this policy. It's, the policy states, I'm not gonna read it all, but the, the main heading of the policy states that the township manager is the board's primary link to operational achievement and conduct, so that authority and accountability of staff, as far as the board is concerned, is considered the authority and accountability of the township manager, except where staff supervised by elected officials have been explicitly directed by those elected officials to act in a manner inconsistent with the township policy. In this case, the elected official would be held accountable. So this for your own consideration and discussion.
Would you like to chime in?
Well, I made it fairly easy on myself and indicated, yes, we're, I believe, we're in full compliance on question one.
That's what I did, too.
Yes, I do believe that to be the case.
I believe that, too. I've never had any, well, my one staff member told her to do something in a, you know, a bad way, or go against policy procedures.
But what these do help us do is review what that policy is.
Correct.
Yeah.
If that policy needs to be expanded on by adding or deletion of anything that is not relevant anymore, or we feel should be included. That's what this tool helps us to do.
Put the discussion? All right. Let's bump it on to the last item, which is the manager's annual performance review.
There was no item, there was no section in your agenda item on this. There was a evaluation form distributed at the last meeting in July, following this performance review. Subsequent time indicates that the next step would be to negotiate with the manager to contact and evaluate compensation and, uh, what's coming here.
All right, in regards to the evaluation form.
Well, I went through the evaluation a number of weeks ago, and I was very comfortable and able to, in good conscience, provide a, what I think was a, a very good review of our township manager. I had a total point of 81 out of a possible 90. Some of the comments I made, what things does the manager do well? I believe our manager is, has a comprehensive understanding and ability to effectively manage the complete township operations and oversee all departments, day-to-day activities, while working on future continuous improvements. I think Mark does a very good job, day-to-day, in his understanding of the scope of the position is certainly robust, and he does a wonderful job, as evidenced by the position of the township and the accomplishments that this board has set out to accomplish. And we continue to make headway and traction and complete some of those ends that we set forth. I believe Mark operates effectively in a challenging environment, and I'm not aware of any significant areas needing improvement. What I do believe we have a better handle on at this point in time than we have in the past is accountability of township staff's performance, one-on-one meetings, and performance evaluations that are done and filed, which is very important for this operation. I also felt that Mark performs at a high level, but what's so important is in the ethical manner that he operates under. That was, in a nutshell, my evaluation.
My evaluation form is in, is at my house, in a box, and I will pull it out and deliver it.
And you said you had prepared, remember?
That's right. I take, let me scratch that one off my list.
Take that one off, take that one off the list there.
But, you know, I do recall filling it out and giving good marks numerically, you know, somewhere between four and five. Some of the things that has, the things that have shown me over time about Mark's capability to adequately perform his job has been the, for example, the monthly activity report, which shows how the staff under his management is doing so much for the township. A lot of detail, but there's a lot of activity going on, and I've often heard other members of this group say, oh, my goodness, this report really shows how much activity staff and the manager are doing to work towards achieving the ends that we've set out for, for, for Mark. You know, and, and while I've sat on different committees for the township, other than the board, but the committees such as the sustainability committee and the... board, but the committees such as the sustainability committee and the sidewalk and pathways prioritization committee, I- Mark's been in attendance to those meetings and added so much organized thought, good guidance and feedback as far as what would be good courses of action to take, Mark. And I've always been impressed by that. So I think that the words I've expressed can be a good support for a good evaluation of Mark as we go forward in the next step of negotiating compensation and benefits for the next year.
Thank you, Phil.
Well, I just feel that some of these questions aren't really relevant to the- and I've said this before, aren't really- I don't understand how they're relevant to the manager. Residents engage in a vibrant community life. Well, how can he be evaluated on that? I don't understand why these questions are on there. Is that- I mean, maybe I'm looking at it wrong. And then, like another one, all residents can thrive and achieve more than their basic needs. Well, how does that have relevance to his management position? I mean, I just don't like some of these questions. As far as an overall deal, like Mark represents township well at a county level. I mean, he's very active in many boards. I talked to Margaret McAvoy, county administrator, about him, and she had good things to say about him. There's a few things that I'd like to see him improve on. I mean, I'm not really happy the way things went down with Natawa Township. I still keep hearing about that, but it's probably with who I work with. But I still think that Natawa Township could have been dealt with better when we went- when they were talking to us about their wastewater treatment. I'm not sure I wrote this down, and maybe you do this more than you used to. I'm not sure how much you get around and drive around the township. I know before, I know I took you for a ride, and you didn't know where some of the roads were, but that was our first year on the board though, too, and that was your first year here, too. So anyways, I did say something about contracts. I'm not really happy the way everything went down last year with contracts. I think we should have been a little more involved or had a little more information instead of just having everything thrown at us at our meeting when we voted on those contracts. We had, that I recall, we had one discussion on contracts last year. We were told what the contracts were going to be for the employee contracts. We were told what we were gonna, a year ago, in July, we were told that they're going to get this bunch of a raise this year, retroactive to whatever, retroactive to January first of eighteen. And then for this year, and I don't think- we never had a chance to give any of our input on that. I mean, I really feel that, you know, we gave five percent raises, and the standard was two and a half, three. And we never got any input on that. I mean, we basically, it was presented to us, and we were asked to vote on it that night. So I'd like to see that improve a little more. Another question I have is who do we hand these into? I mean, usually when I do evaluations of employees, I bring their supervisors and just say, talk with them, and say, okay, how is Tim doing? You know, I mean, you think he deserves a raise? Well, here, we're doing it right in front of the person that we're evaluating. And I just don't- I think that we should- this should be in like a private discussion first, and then bring it forward later. Like, when we come and evaluate you in person, we should have a evaluation amongst us first, and then have our conclusion when you come in, or you or any manager comes in for their evaluation. I mean, when you evaluate employees here, I'm sure you talk to- I just want to give an example, maybe you talk to Sherry. I guess I can't use this place as an example because it's all stuff and, you know. I'm looking more at like private industry, you know? I don't know, Phil, like when you guys give raises where you work, people that you supervise, I'm sure you don't discuss everything with them right away. You have discussions with their supervisors, and then you bring that employee in and say, hey, I've- it's your evaluation time, and your supervisors said this about you, they like what you do here, they like what you do there, and here's the areas that you can improve on. I don't think we should be doing this in public. I think we should be discussing this in private. Then his evaluation, maybe we can do that in public, or the manager's evaluation. I just don't like this process.
I agree with Phil.
I agree with it.
I mean, I don't know if you can do that with a board. I mean, you can always break it off three-three if you have to.
Well, I mean, I've been on school boards where you evaluate the principal, and you don't do it when they're right there in front of you.
I think we can, we can use a closed session, I believe, there, because this would be a discussion about an employee. So manager's an employee, and you could use a closed session as a tool to have a roundtable and discussion on this.
I don't know, I'd have to look that up.
I mean, I mean, that might be the way to do it. I agree with Bill, it's- it's-
Well, maybe I'm wrong. You know, I just don't like the way we do this. I don't think it's fair to the manager.
I think it's an uncomfortable, it's an uncomfortable-
It is.
Situation for not only us, but also for Mark. Right? I mean, so.
It is indeed different than the private sector.
Right, and I guess I look at the private sector too much. I mean, how does the city do it? You think the city does this? I don't know. I mean, maybe you've been at a city commission meeting where they've evaluated the Nancy-
Well, in the, what, three years, or almost three years, maybe three years? I, no.
I-
But they don't have the policy governance either. This is a policy governance.
I can help you with that, and I appreciate your comments, but in terms of process, it is different than the private sector. The board, if you're going to be making a decision, you have to do it in public. You could break off into subgroups, as you suggest, and talk amongst yourselves, but at the end of the day, you're still going to individually be filling out a form probably, unless you change completely the process.
But why don't we turn that form into you? I don't think-
I've never been any place, at any level, where I've not gotten a copy of my own performance evaluation. And then in terms of public or private, it could be done in closed session if I requested it, but it, by rule, it's me that requests the closed session, not the governing body. And I've chosen not to request a closed session because I'm not uncomfortable. I appreciate the feedback, positive and negative, I'm looking for, and I don't even, I don't want to use the word negative, constructive criticism I'm all for, I don't mind any of this in public.
I hear what you're saying. It is a different process than, you know, I was accustomed to.
I know you and I discussed this earlier today, and I just don't feel comfortable doing this in public. I feel we should give these to our supervisor, and then the supervisor requests that, okay, next meeting, we're going to discuss the evaluation, and then we give the ratings or-
Can't you just average them all?
Turn it down or whatever.
Right. Ultimately, though, the way I see an evaluation is to, in terms of constructive criticism, is to both to assess the employee's job performance and functioning, to offer suggestions for areas of improvement. So in that regard, that's what we're doing with this. But it certainly is different, you know, because it's on TV, it's public, the whole thing, and it makes the whole process different. But I think at the end of the day, the person that's being evaluated needs to be able to have that information so that they can see both what they're excelling in, where they're meeting expectations, where it's satisfactory, or where areas of improvement are needed, you know? So I, I'm okay with the process in that regard, you know, because I think there's constructive criticism goes on, but, you know, is this the best format? You know, I mean, I don't, I won't dispute that, you know?
I mean, I don't like it at all, just because you have to choose your words very carefully because you can't bring up a person, a specific topic, or a place. You have to watch, like, you gotta have a surround, or you gotta watch what you say, exactly. Because you're not allowed to talk about specifics if you're talking about them and they're not present, or a government place, or like you say in Natawa Township, should we even, you know?
And the form too, I agree, because what ends up happening on the global ends, I'm given threes and fours, because you're talking about things like, all residents can thrive and achieve more than their basic needs, all residents enjoy a safe environment, residents enjoy the natural resources. Again, that's not necessarily the manager's responsibility, where, and so consequently, for me, it pulls Mark's overall score down-
Right.
-to some extent, because on the executive limitations, it's all fours and fives. But then on these global ends, which I don't even see the relevance in it, it's threes and fours.
Yeah, threes and fours, yeah.
So that affects, that affects the overall quality of the score. For the executive limitations, that's where I see where I'm really evaluating Mark's performance. And as I said, you know, it's fours and fives, like you suggested too, Tim. So the form might be-
I, I myself, I don't like this form at all, either.
Yeah, these questions were obviously created, or what, in 2010 or whatever, by whatever board was there, and whoever was- some of the stuff they came up to is up with, so obtuse, it's-
Yeah. Actually, the form, and this gets back to, you had an opportunity to deal with this, I think it's policy 4.2. But the form itself is being driven by the policy governance document, and there's a policy, and I think it's 4.2, that says what the manager, whoever the manager is, is going to be reviewed under. And the two main things is the, to what degree are the ends being accomplished, and to what degree are the limitations being followed. So that's why this form is the way it is. You got a section on ends, and you got a section on limitations. And there was a report as part of reporting out, because I have to report out each of these policies once a month, every year, or, you know, throughout the year, and there was a, there was a report out on the achievement of the ends, and I forget what policy that is, but it was a multi-page document that sorted out what the organization did, and how that footed, if you will, and how that worked towards the accomplishment of the ends. So that would have been a big, if I was doing it, a big input into how I was reviewing the manager. But the process is defined in your policy governance manual. So that's where it comes from. It's just not made out of whole cloth, and whether or not that's the one you want to use or not, that's up to you folks. But that's where it's from.
Maybe we should go through some of these questions at some point in time, figure out what they mean.
Yeah, we need them.
Figure out what they mean. All right. Let's see. Anybody else want any input in this item? We want to move forward.
I'll just add, 4.4, I'm sorry.
4.4.
Things that Mark does well, you know, certainly well organized. I think it's evident in terms of the attention to detail that goes into all the follow-up and things that we get from him. I think what I really appreciate is that, I feel the communication is always clear and direct. You know, there's no mincing of words. I understand exactly where Mark's at and what he's saying to me, and I appreciate that. I think also he provides some really concrete and sound and very beneficial direction when you ask. I mean, all you need to do is call if you have a question about something, and I felt that he's always been helpful in that regard. Integrity, I think that's a big, big plus, and I think that that means a whole lot in terms of, I think that the culture of a, of a, of an organization starts from the top down, and I think it starts with the integrity. And I think that that carries on for then all of us, because that's something we've all been talking about, is the integrity. I also like his steady Eddie quality, you know, he's reliable and steady, and I like that, you know, he doesn't get a big rise out of certain things. So that's been real positive. I think also Mark's vision for what he's been doing with both the staffing and the services that he sees needing to be provided in the organization coincides very well with both the growth and the needs of the community. So I think it's a nice mesh that way. And I think that our fiscal solvency is the envy of any community, and it's in part because we do our due diligence in terms of our fiduciary responsibility, but we also have a manager that I think is really good in terms of providing the budget and managing the funds. So I think that combination is what keeps us always, you know, afloat, and more than just afloat, I mean, well-equipped. And so I'm pleased with what, you know, what has been done. If I were making some suggestions, I would think that what I'd like to see is perhaps sometimes, I think Bill was maybe suggesting this too, sometimes maybe more compromise, I'm going to use the Little League as an example, more compromise on some of the issues that might come up in terms of the painting, et cetera, sooner, rather than have it first get to a kind of a high pitch before it gets addressed in a way. So I think that sometimes things can be smoothed out if we're just more accommodating and understanding of some of what the constituents are asking, or different folks come in and are asking. And I think that the other one, I like the fact that we're being kept abreast of issues going on, but I think one thing I would suggest for area of improvement, but also that in terms of the legal matters or personnel matters, that we're sooner in the loop than later. Sometimes we hear it kind of through the grapevine, and then we ask a question. And I think Mark's been better with that, but I think that that's an area, just making sure we're constantly, you know, being informed, would be, you know, some areas of improvement that I would see in this too, so.
And that was on mine as well. It's just being kept in the loop a little sooner as well.
I don't have mine on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but, I mean, I know I wrote that on mine. I haven't filled out, it's at home. Not sure where, but.
I'm going to piggyback on some of the things that were mentioned already. I do think the real positives are, I think, the organization, how efficiently things operate, budgeting, obviously, I think is a strong suit, agenda planning, obviously, is a strong suit. I think some of the things that I would probably have question on has been more human resources matters than business operations. I piggyback on the Little League thing got out of hand, and I think being less rigid on the paint colors and maybe compromising somewhere in there would have diffused a situation where a lot of people were pretty riled up. where a lot of people were pretty riled up. But I think, you know, human resources in particular is, is, I think, something that maybe isn't, you know, our manager's strongest suit, could be improved upon. How particular individuals are treated, whether it's consistent. Is everybody treated the same within the building? Do we have people that are operating on the same consistent business hours as everybody else? You know, those are questions I have. So, we move on from Item F, unless somebody else wants to chime in on something on that again? Okay. This would be Item 11, Extended Public Comment. This is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. This cannot be a manner back and forth between the board and the public commentator. Would anybody like to come forward at this time? Nope, for one individual? So, seeing the, nobody else, we'll close public comment, and we'll move to Item 12.
Thank you, and I'll just start off with thanking the board for the input that you provided a few minutes ago. I think it's all very good and valid. It reminds me of what I need to pay attention to. I was particularly, Bill, your comment about getting out and driving around the township more, it's always on my mind, it'd be getting out there more, and so, I appreciate hearing that. So, thank you, and whatever success I have, or have had, is a, is a direct result of two things. One, the staff that works for the township, all 25 or so folks, along, as, as well as you as a board, helping me stay going down the, down the right direction. So, I thank, and give credit to all the staff for your positive comments, and to your guidance as well that I get throughout the year. So, thank you. And then, then the last thing is just to thank Phil for the pleasure of being able to work with you the last three years. You were on the board when I was brought in, it has been a pleasure to work with you, and I wish y'all the best moving forward.
Thank you.
All right. We move on to final board comments. Oh, let's see. Norm, why don't you start it off?
Okay. The only thing I want to talk about is regarding filling the vacancy, you know, and there's been a lot of names been floated around. I think I liked Lisa's suggestion, because I was gonna suggest that tonight, that we just sort of slow it down a little bit, because, you know, I think filling a position, we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, that we're vetting the candidates, and that we're putting the best qualified person into filled slot. And that's what we need to be doing for us as a board, for, for the sake of the township, and for our constituents, for the, for the residents of the community, that that's what they deserve. So, in slowing it down, I had an idea, and I just want to kind of throw it out to the board, and, you know, maybe we can even decide on that, if this is a direction. As with our other boards, we always have an application procedure, you know, when I applied for the Planning Commission or the ZBA, I filled out an application. We've all done that. Tonight, for example, Ben was asking if there's an application for the, for the slots for the pathway and sidewalk committee. So, I think it's important that we give this some time, both in terms of transparency, I think in terms of, you know, giving people an opportunity to, to respond, and, and also when we talk about our, you know, board, citizen linkage, that we're making sure that we're, we're doing our due diligence to get them the right person. So, that being said, what I would suggest is that, kind of, let me just go, kind of go through the steps that I'm seeing, that there'd be an application process for every candidate, for each person that's interested in applying for the, for the slot, so that we can have an opportunity to, to evaluate that. I think that that should be opened for two weeks. I think that there should be at least a two-week period, and my, the date I came up with was September 13th. It's after the next board meeting. It actually gives us two weeks and two days for people to get in their applications, for us to look at those applications, and then to have time between that and the next meeting. I would suggest that on the meeting, on the 25th, at that meeting, that we would invite each of the candidates to come to the board, to our board meeting, and that each one uses the public comment, the first three minutes, and each candidate have a three-minute presentation as to why they're applying for the position, their vision for the township, what they feel they can contribute. I think that, again, that to me is proper vetting. You know, Phil's replacement, I think it's gonna be, he has some big shoes to fill. I mean, he's done a tremendous job, and I just want to make sure that whoever we get in, it's not a knee-jerk reaction, it's not partisan, it's not based on pressure that we're getting from people, but it's based on coming up with the, with the right person. So, and then, at that same board meeting on the 25th, is that then, we then deliberate, and we make a decision as to who we are going to pick for the slot. You know, I think this should be done with the utmost respect. I think we should be listening to one another, you know, and again, it should be for, for what's the best for the board, for the township, and for the citizens. So, that would be the, the format that I would be suggesting. Again, the 13th is when everything, the applications would be due. Everyone then comes in on the 25th, which gives us time then to review all those applications. They come in on the 25th, they have a three-minute presentation, we hear who they are, because there's some, there's some names that are floating around, I don't know the individuals, and I can't possibly vote for or against anyone's nomination without knowing them. So, it's not, it doesn't give us all the information, but it gives us an idea of who they are and why they want to be doing this. And then, and then we have, have our vote at the end of that, you know, sometime during that meeting, it's on the agenda. So, that's what I would propose. I didn't know where to fit this in tonight, so, you know...
That's the same thing I had in mind, I just wanted it on the agenda, you know, so they could see it, and then, you know, it posted in the newspaper, and then, where we could ask them a question if we had a question.
Yep, yep.
So, you know...
I like that, yeah. Yeah, we were on the same page, when I saw your thing, I said, oh, that's perfect, you know? I think we were getting too involved, too heated up with it, and I know there's a lot of enthusiasm and passion and all that, and I get that, but I think we, you know, we're smart enough to make sure that we make the wise decisions. We do that on all other things that we do here on the board. We just don't need your reaction things. We tend to be very, we tend to be a pretty cautious board when it comes to things, and conservative in terms of how we go about making our decision-making. So, let's make this one very prudent and very effective.
I would like to hope too, that, in those two meetings, because we would be an even board...
Sure.
That we, I don't know if we can monitor, or we can be, we can look at what we're placing on the agendas during those...
I was gonna suggest, we have nothing else on the agendas.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, the 25th, you wouldn't. And then, you know, the other option is, is that there's certainly no reason in the world why we couldn't actually call a special meeting just for this purpose, as opposed to our business meeting.
I mean, I say we put it on the 25th agenda, and then if we need to call a special, we still have time.
Yeah, yeah. I think we'll get a feel on the 25th, and then, if we're not comfortable, you know, my sense is, if we end up going two or three meetings without a person on the board, it's not gonna be the, you know, because more often than not, most of our decisions are either unanimous, or pretty much...
One or two.
I just wouldn't want to have something come in like a special news committee or something like that, where it's maybe one of these things that has a little edge to it, you know, and then be, and have a sixth person. We had that happen two years ago, and it ended up with, with all kinds of issues, right?
I don't think we have...
And I just don't want to have that happen again.
So, so the only meeting, one is for the 11th, you know, what's on the agenda then, and then it would be on the 25th. And the 25th, if we all feel comfortable at that time, you know, to make our decision, we should do it. But if, for any reason, we're not, or we need more information, Ben, I think a special meeting would make sense, you know, so, that's sort of the timeframe I was looking at in terms of doing this. I'm just throwing it out.
I agree with you, Norm. I just look at it and say, okay, if we get the applications in by the 13th, you know, we have that week of, it'd be sure nice to have, to go into the 25th with, I just like the idea of having an odd, odd member situation, just, just to cover things. I think it's, whatever comes through, it's always gonna be, you know, fair to whoever is bringing something to us, right, that we have the proper amount of people on, on the board. And like you said, a lot of the times, we don't have anything where it's a 3-3 or 4-3 anyway, but, I mean, I, I like the idea of, of having a business meeting being a business meeting, and then, if we're looking at this, I don't see any reason in the world why we couldn't just go ahead and schedule something on the 18th.
Oh, so you want, you want a special meeting ahead of that, and then call up...
I want a special meeting, I'd like to...
Make a decision on the 25th?
You got it. If we've got everybody's resumes in here by the 13th, you know, and applications, then I don't see any reason in the world why we couldn't act on this the following week.
That following week.
Just have a special meeting just specifically that where they can come in.
Yeah, because I mean, otherwise, we're looking at, we're looking at a meeting where we could be walking out of here at 11:30 in the, you know, at night or something.
I'm not, like, that second week.
We have to make sure it's open.
How's this for, Ben, how's this for a special way of dealing with, with the issue at hand? For one, you know, I like the, the two-week and two-day application process, because it gives, you know, we have a holiday coming up here, so that's, a lot of people are gonna be out of town, and I can be focusing on local issues. So, that September 13th deadline makes a lot of sense. And, and to keep it on the September 25th meeting, I think is a good idea, because it's our next meeting, but I would recommend that the candidates make their presentations during the presentation section of the agenda, Item 5, rather than the public comment.
You're right.
Because I, I heard Lisa say, maybe we could ask the person a question. Ask him or her a question. So, it would make sense to me to have that under the presentations. And then, let's, let's make the filling of the trustee vacancy, Item A, under new business. So, then, let's say there is some other issue that comes up, well, we're gonna take care of it right away, and you all will take care of it right away, as the first action item under new business.
I like that.
And Lisa, would that person then be able to be sworn in that day?
I believe so.
Following the vote of the board, so then, you'd have your full seven million contingent for any business that would follow.
I'd feel more comfortable with that. I don't like going to two meetings with even numbers.
And if we, if we get into a glitch, where, for whatever reason, we don't, we don't have a, we can't decide on that person on the 25th, then I think that's where I would want to do then, the special meeting. That's, to me, would make more sense, because then we'd have to either, you know, vet, vet them differently, or we'd have to come find a way for us to work through, you know, whatever differences we have, or what we're looking for. So, I like what you're saying, Phil. I mean, I like, like, I like that format.
When we do like a rock, paper, scissors tiebreaker, best of three, or something like that, I'm serious, why not? I mean, Russ, Russ lost the election, or I'm pulling out a straw.
You wore your name on a hat, wasn't it?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. It was.
So, is that, is that, are we in agreement then, that that would be what we would do, is then, have, go until the 13th, and because of the holiday and that, the people's applications are due by the 13th? Gives everyone an opportunity to participate? Then we have that period of time to, you know, look at those, they come in on the 25th, during the presentation setting, section, they end up speaking about, they can talk about what they want to regarding why they're applying, et cetera. We can ask questions at that point, and then on the agenda, A becomes picking the person. And hopefully, we can do that in a way that we're all comfortable with, you know?
I'd be great, because then, over the next two weeks, I'll be able to work for my business, instead of answering phone calls about this all day.
There you go.
I just have a question for you. What radio station do you listen to?
What radio station do I listen to? Well, when I start...
Like, when you're driving to work tomorrow morning?
I listen to a few, it depends. Generally, okay, it's like CMU Public Radio.
Okay, I'm gonna request, that's not gonna work.
And then, when I get down to Lansing, I'm gonna listen to an AM talk station.
Okay, so, well, talk radio...
And I might even pick up a classic rock station along the way.
I was gonna say, 94.9.
94.9.
That's the only one.
I'm gonna call, listen, tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning at 7:30, we listen to the radio, and MMQ, and I'm gonna call there and request a song for you, Casey and the Sunshine Band, please don't go.
Ah.
Thank you very much. Casey and the Sunshine Band, seriously.
Wow, wow.
Wow. That's something to look forward to.
For my comment, I just want to thank Phil for this.
Yeah, my comment is done now, I think that was a kind of extended comment, but...
It was a pleasure working with you. You kept our board in line.
It's been a pleasure working with you and every other member of the board, absolutely. Thank you.
Just following up on what our previous conversation was on. I thought I heard Lisa mention advertising in the newspaper. Any thoughts of any other ways to get word out quickly to the broad community?
I think the word's already out.
I think so too.
Considering all the people, it contacted me.
I mean, we can put it on the door, post it on the website.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can it be on the website?
I was wondering, like, maybe, public broadcasting.
Yeah, when you asked about the station, I was thinking that's the direction we're going in.
What about a freebie on the, on the big billboard over here?
I always hear stuff about the city and the township on the radio, going into work, like, but I can't remember what state it is.
Prepare our news release, and you could send it to the news agencies.
It might be.
Well, the reporter, I think, watches this stuff anyway, so it wouldn't shock me, we end up having a story on this, so...
But, I mean, we do want to touch as many citizens.
Yes, yes.
We can...
Because when you look at the amount of time that we put in, in terms of campaigning, and the number of houses we went to, and the people we were meeting, I mean, so, you know, we were going out to, so we get ourselves known, and so, I think giving people an opportunity to, you know, have a chance to come in here and that, and give them some time in which to do it, makes sense.
You're giving Jane Q Citizen an opportunity, right?
Yes.
And that's what we want.
And that's, that's a, that's a board community linkage that we keep on talking about, you know?
So, on our website, and also allow people to see how we operate under the policy governance, which is on the website.
Yes.
I should say Jane Q Citizen too.
Both.
So, if I'm in my final board comment, Phil, I just want to give you a hearty thank you for your service to the township.
Well, thank you.
Over the easy 11 years, and I thoroughly enjoyed being able to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. You know, my final board comment would be that I have really enjoyed working as a public servant, and just every election year, I'm amazed, oh my gosh, you know, a couple thousand people voted for me, and that's a wonderful thing, and that's what powered me to do the best I could, and, in this seat. And I will be tuning in to see who fills the seat, and best of luck to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When are we gonna discuss this? We, I thought we were gonna do that, this meeting, the wage study.
We discussed a lot of that in the closed session, and we were talking about the negotiation grant.
Okay, I thought we were gonna do it in...
And we can, maybe, what would you like me to bring, to bring focus to, maybe?
I just thought we were gonna go over it, we spent a lot of money on it.
I would like to go over it when I'm present.
What's that? Yeah.
Let's not do it in...
Let's not do it on the 9/25 meeting, though.
Yeah, not that day.
Maybe we should even do that when we have no person in place to. I mean, because there's gonna be a learning curve. If, you know, if people have had much experience on boards, there's gonna be a tremendous learning curve, and remember, we only have a year and a quarter left of our existing term, so, you know, it's that you want to make sure that, you know, people aren't gonna have to have a long learning curve, because that's gonna still be a three-three vote in a way.
It takes a couple of years to get to.
We, all our newbies, we were like deer in the headlights when we started. I mean, you know, we didn't know what we were doing, and, you know, so.
You might, we might say that we still.
You're right. I was gonna say that. Some might say that, huh?
Exactly.
Well, my final board comment, you know, I got to be on the board with you a couple years longer than some of these, so, you know, I just, you know, it's been fun seeing, you know, working with you, and, I mean, two different boards, so it was, it was a real pleasure, and I hope you keep us informed on your theatrical, you know, so, or maybe come back to, you know, Mount Pleasant and let us know when you're gonna be there, so we can come and support you there too.
Thanks, Ken. Appreciate that.
So you're, are you gonna move out of state, or you're gonna?
Eventually, yeah. I'm just in a temporary transition state position, and I'll let you know more when I feel like it.
If I was in a transition state, I'd be doing it somewhere warm.
But, and then September 14th, taxes. I said it once already, but just reminder.
Thank you very much.
So applications are due on the 13th, taxes are due on the 14th.
There you go. All right. 9/25 is gonna be a, probably a full house, I'm guessing. So with that, we need to have, did you bring your hat, Phil, for the last time? Did you do it?
I haven't been wearing a hat lately.
I know. You need to be cool.
You should donate the hat.
I just want to confirm, it feels to me that what I'm gonna do to help support the board in filling this vacancy is to, and this will help get the word out too, together a press release, acknowledge trustee Micus's resignation, talk about filling the seat, looking for interested candidates, indicate that applications would be due by the close of business on the 13th.
Make sure you put in that you must be a resident of Union Township.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some people don't know that.
And we're asking about requirements too, right? So we have like an application, we want to have a resume too with these?
Just have an application is fine.
I think an application and a resume.
I agree.
Well, what I would suggest is to use the same application that you use for all your boards.
Right.
You got that. It's not an employment application. And that you also require a resume. And so I can, that'll be the common message, that'll be in the press release, on MAC TV, on the website, and applications should be submitted to my office, the clerk, where do you want those submitted? Who's gonna be the keeper of those? I'm happy to do it, but I just don't want to.
They should walk from one end of the township to the other, too.
They drive a bell.
I have Jeff Relaxman's box.
So we should submit.
Yeah, I would say clerk.
Okay.
At her house.
No.
Where's your drop?
At my house.
You're funny.
Throw it on the porch.
So if they're going to the clerk, then we'll make sure we get them to the clerk, because the clerk, you know, they'll come into our hands first. We'll make sure they get into the clerk's inbox, but then the administration won't be responsible for monitoring them, keeping any sort of list or any of that jazz, because they're being submitted to the clerk, and that's why I'm asking this.
Should we check with the clerk and see?
Typically, would handle all other applications.
All the others go to us, we keep a file, and we're happy to do it, but if you're worried about who's, you know, applying and all that kind of stuff, and you just want to keep it within your seven people that are administering this, you know, that's a thought too. But that's why I'm asking the question, because if we just leave here before I bring this stuff up, we don't have any direction.
So when we get these applications in, then do we want to, we want to electronically transmit these all at the same time?
Okay. Sorry.
Go ahead.
We've already received two.
In my opinion, this, I mean, this is just my opinion, but all of our other applications go through you guys. I say we treat this like any other position, any other application, and deal with it the same manner that we do with the other ones. I mean, we've already had it in place for all the other boards, why not stick with something that's already been in motion before? So that's just my opinion, but.
That's fine, on the 14th, you'll have a file with all the applications emailed to you.
To know that I've been working like five, six days a week at my other job, just so you know. So if one of you guys want me to do that, you've gotta come in and help me. Just saying.
We just take them, we put them in a file, and when the 13th expires, we're gonna make an electronic copy and email y'all a packet, is what I'd be doing with them.
That'd be fine.
It's public information. Now the applications that we receive, it's, we can't prevent it from the FOIA Act, any of that stuff.
Okay. Thanks for that, Dr. Rafferty.
Okay, so Phil put your pretend hat on. All right, with that, we have a motion to adjourn, I believe. You have a second?
So moved.
Say aye or nay?